To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Scott Murphy?
Here.
Webber?
Yep.
Greg Corney?
Here.
Rose Jackson?
Here.
Beth Skinner?
Here.
Chris Chapman? And Susan Webster.
We need to have a review of the minutes from August 2nd meeting. I will take any additions or corrections by common consent. Everybody okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Okay. Persons before council. We have a few people here that are before council this evening because they put an application in for the Landmarks Commission and I think-
And also Beth Development.
Right, and the Bath Development. So, what I would like to do is we'll go ahead and bring you all forward, let you introduce yourselves to the council and everything, and then what we're going to do since for the commission, we have more people that have applied than what we can actually sit on the commission, so what we're going to do is we're going to review them and go back to the few members that are on the commission, have them probably call you guys in and talk with you all personally, and then have them give the recommendation of who we could put on that committee. Like I said, we're only allowed to have five, we're in the process of changing that back down from what it was, had been moved to, so we're only allowed five members and I think we have three right now. So, anyway, if, Charlie, if you want to start out, just introduce yourself to the council. I know you're looking to get on the Landmarks Commission, so I know most people pretty well should know you with having the business downtown, but this would be a good time to introduce yourself.
I'm Charlie Curia, owner of Mountain Laurel Artisans. Been building a house here in Berkeley Springs for about twelve years. Moved up here permanently in the Queen of the Keys. Degrees in clinical pharmacy, communications and electronics engineering, a master's in systems engineering, PMP certified. Did a lot of projects, designed my own house out here at Berkeley Springs. Had it checked over by a civil engineer, validated all my numbers and everything, remodeled the townhouse over there in northern Virginia. So I took a couple of years to do that. Yeah, and I'm here in Berkeley Springs and care about the town, looking forward to serving.
Now, one of the things that we're changing in the ordinance, I don't know if it'll be that fourth this evening, or the chairman isn't here, he may just be late, I'm not sure, but we are bringing it down to five to be consistent with state law. One of the other things is that three of the members on the commission will be town of Bath residents, living in the district within the corporate limits of the town of Bath. The other two, and that's at a minimum because our focus is on town residents, the other two seats can be people who live in Morgan County, insurance primary residents, and own property in town. We're looking for, you know, that connection, that skin in the game, as they say, you know. So, I do think that that's enough, that applies to you, that it does apply to you.
Okay, anything else, Charlie? Good deal. All right, thanks, man, appreciate it. And like I said, what we'll do is we'll have the Landmark Commission and the three members that are on that board right now probably get ahold of you guys, speak with you, sit down and talk with you all individually, and then we're going to let them probably make a recommendation of who, because like I said, we got more people that have applied.
For real, I'm just-
Yeah.
It's not a bad problem.
No, it's not a bad problem, but I don't want to upset somebody that really could participate. I mean, we do have other things that we need help with volunteering-wise in the community and other committees, so maybe whoever doesn't come into the fold this way with the Landmarks Commission, maybe could come along and help us either with parks and wrecks or something else somewhere along the line, so.
We have a lot of needs, very gratified to see you guys.
But like I said, that's basically, I think, how we're going to handle this now that we have more applicants, you know, I'm not used to having this problem. So, anyway, like I said, we'll go from there, so.
Go fishing around here. Yeah, see, we can catch one.
All right. Well, let's bring Brandon Mittelkopf forward and let him speak to the council on why he would like to volunteer on the commission.
So I moved here not too long ago, I live up on radio station lane. One of the things I like to do is I pick up a lot of trash in town because my daughter lives over here and it's one of the best, prettiest towns I've ever been in, and for her, growing up here, it's got to be the best town in the United States. One of the reasons I want to be on the Historical Landmark Association is because that's actually the biggest part of our town. I mean, I know we got small shops and we got all that, but some of that stuff you could find just around any small town around Berkeley Springs. So if we want to keep our town as beautiful and flowing with cash and profit and people and tourism, we got to really work on our historical value. I mean, you have other towns like Gettysburg and Harpers Ferry and stuff that capitalized on that. I mean, it's taken away a lot of the stuff that we could be having in this town, not just for tourism, but for our own community, for our kids. I mean, the stuff that's going on in town with our kids and stuff, it's crazy, but if we can make our town have more foundation, I think that'll be key to a successful town. I mean, we don't want to end up being another Hancock or any small town that just doesn't have anything, sorry. Not saying anything bad about Hancock, it's just that there's a lot of stuff scooped out there.
You said that because I grew up in Hancock.
I mean, the drive-in, the pool, I mean, and those kids have nothing to do. I mean, anything they have in that town is the gym. But if we could get tourism going, we could get our streets picked up from trash and people littering and stuff, we could be the town. You know what I mean? I mean, I know we are the town, but we need other people to see that.
Right. Amen. Amen. Okay, well, thank you very much.
And thanks for picking up the trash.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. So, okay, then we're going to move on to Mr. John Mason.
Well, thanks for allowing me to come in this evening. You guys know I'm a local, born and raised in Berkeley Springs, graduated from the high school in 1979, went to Shepherd and graduated in 1984. I worked at U.S. Silica in the corporate office for almost 15 years, and my last 20 years working was with a company called EDP, and I was on the road traveling a lot, so I wasn't here in town to help out. Most recently, I'm sure everyone is familiar with Charlotte's Cafe on the edge of town, used to be the old Worm Springs Restaurant.
Yep.
And I think that we've revitalized that piece and brought it back to its glory days. And I just think that I need to give back to the community. I know I heard Susan mention the requirements. I don't live in town, but I do own property in the town limits, in the old Park House, which would be an historic landmark. I live on Fairview Drive, so I'm just a couple miles outside of town. But I think based on my experience and my skills, I would be a good fit for the Landmark Commission.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thanks.
Second time seeing you today.
Like I said, you know, we have more applicants than we have that we can put on the commission, so like I said, they're going to be in touch, I will get, we'll get ahold of them, have them kind of sit down and review, and then probably get ahold of you guys and see when would be a good time to meet with you individually. I think that would be the best way to do, sit down and talk, and then you guys can really let them know what you're looking to do and how you guys can help with the Landmark Commission, and then we'll go from there. So we'll probably make it, we'd like to try to get a full commission once we do our thing tonight, we'd like to try to have a full commission set by probably next meeting if things work out, because we have, the state is coming down, the Landmark Commission from the state is coming down to give us some training, so we would like to have that full committee ready to roll. So, like I said, we'll be in touch in probably, I would say, the next week or so.
I hope so.
And see if we can go ahead and get, we have current phone numbers for everybody, so, you know, and I think that's the way we'll roll with this.
We have had others apply aside from you three gentlemen also, and that's so, and we haven't had a chance to talk to them, but please, if you want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you'll hear us through these groups that we need help with.
Somebody's got a restaurant, I can run.
You know, I have another meeting I need to get to.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Mayor, if I could make a comment, please, too, for, you know, we are in a unique position, but just like we do in the Planning Commission, we have our five set members, but we also have, I call them associate members, they're not on the commission, but we have more work than the five can do in a lot of cases. So, you know, for anybody who isn't selected based on their expertise or experience, there still is flexibility based on the president of the commission to keep you engaged with it. That would be my one comment.
That would be wonderful if, you know, if whoever, you know, doesn't get into this category, we can go ahead and, you know, we can get you in contact with our president of our Planning Commission and, uh-
No, I'm sorry, I meant for the Historic Commission.
Or Historic.
So, yeah, if the president of the Historic Commission, you know, I got my five, but hey, you other, one, two, three, four, whatever, because there's, again, there's a ton of projects that need to get done, so we have the five voting members. But as I said, I think, I think the bylaws allow for-
That is true. Well, what the state law says, you know, allows the Historic Landmark Commission to have staff, to have employees, to have consultants, to have, you know, and not necessarily paid consultants and like that. So it can be, there can be a subcommittee, let's say, and here's what I'm hoping, I'm hoping the Historic Landmarks Commission wants to get more involved in the depot work than it has been before, because it's a big deal, and the rail trail beginning there and like that, so there's a lot to be done. So I, you know, I do see the flexibility that Larry brought up, availability to help, and there's other, and we have, we have other groups too there.
Absolutely. So like I said, don't feel if you don't get picked for this group or whatever that you're left out, because we have a lot of places that we can use people to help us out because we can't do it, we don't have the time to do it, so we can reach out to you all and say, hey, can you help us out here, or can you help us out there, or help us do this, or help us? I mean, this, this is the thing with this community, I've been here for forty-some years, and this community is all volunteers. We, this council could not do what we do with streetscapes and Planning Commission and, you know, the Landmarks Commission and, you know, all the other stuff, the parks and wrecks and all that kind of stuff, if we didn't have our volunteers. Those are the ones that make it, make it rock and roll. So, so I'm very thankful that we have more people that have applied than I'm have to try to go out, or Susan, or Beth, or somebody's trying to go out to get somebody to come in to sit on the commission, so.
If you don't want to.
Yeah, so.
Just make your effort to come and to fill out an application and show up and want to talk to us, that's a big deal.
That's a big thing. So, all right, we're going to move on. Thank you all. Let's see, we're going to move on to, yeah, BDA. Yeah, I'm going to go with the BDA, so we have a applicant there for the BDA, so I don't know if you want to introduce yourself.
My name is Paula Straight. I moved to this area sixteen years ago, live just outside of town limits, up by the Board of Education. We do a lot in town with the businesses as far as visiting them and frequenting them, and we want to, I personally would like to see the businesses continue to develop, and I would love to be a part of that. I worked at the Country Inn for almost five years, I worked at C&amp;B Bank for eight years, I'm now Rydersville Cycle, been there almost four years, so it's a wonderful town and I just want to see it flourish and be the best that it can be, and if I can be a part of that, I would be more than welcome to give my help doing that.
And this is Bath Development authority that you've applied. Now, Lisa, you know, your group has invited to have a different number of people, so I don't, I don't recall sitting right here how many you have, but Paula being an addition is, is welcome.
Oh, yes, yes, and the energy is welcome, and we definitely need-
We'll take her.
And we're going to let her take you.
I just said, I'm not mad at you.
Yes, you are.
I love energy. It'll drive you crazy after a while.
Yeah, I think we can go ahead and, if council so moves, to-
Yep, so moved.
I have a motion of second on the floor to bring Paula Straight into the Bath Development. Yes, second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go. You're in, boss.
You're all ready. Welcome to party.
We wanted this all to be over today, tootoo.
All right.
Thank you.
That's done, so, do you have anything else for Bath Development, by any chance?
Just some updates, we're, we're still working on the website, I know Bill and Tony have been talking, we're working, coordinating more with the other groups around town, we are working on that. We are really moving towards, we're starting to get that energy back pre-COVID that we had, that we were setting the world on fire, that's slowly coming back around, I think we're going to get a shot of energy here very shortly, whether we want it or not.
It's Paula.
Yes, yes, so I will have, you know, get the energy back and then be coming with you hopefully with all sorts of fun and crazy stuff.
Okay. All right. Thank you, and thank you Paula for being willing to volunteer. Okay. Moving right along, Parks and Wrecks, their next meeting's the 17th at 7:00 at Gorgous House. We are still looking for somebody, two members for Parks and Wrecks, if you know anybody that would be willing to volunteer to get on that committee for Parks and Wrecks, let us know.
And you can be on more than one committee, too, so, you know.
So, yeah.
Lots of interest.
Brandon, everybody seems to be looking at you.
He looks strong, doesn't he? Right.
He might just fit in, I don't know, we'll just have to see.
And Wreck House? Wreck only one wreck?
It looks like he's got that energy, you know. All right, we're going to move right along, Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hey, two points from our meeting that we had earlier in the month, and then we have gotten our weekly working groups restarted after we have our, had our summer hiatus for holiday there. First and foremost, we're really digging down into goal two in the comprehensive plan dealing with water, water supply, and a lot of changes since 2017 with water infrastructure. So I was hoping Chris would be here, so I got asked him to come on in at our next meeting and give us kind of a detailed look at that, so I'll follow up with him for that as we're trying to get a better handle to make sure identifying those opportunities and challenges for water for our community in the future.
You might want to go ahead also and invite our water supervisor, might be a good idea to have him there because he's got a grasp on, you know, what we're looking at future-wise, you know, with, you know, possible project Al 522 and also Ron Janiney, I would go ahead and invite him, too.
I'm trying to spell.
No, I was-
Sharon probably knows.
Phonetically, it's fine. The second point, and I'm glad I've got the BDA here and I've got the chair, the president of several of the commissions, if you go back to the last comprehensive plan, one of the things that we tasked ourselves as a town was to periodically review the town comprehensive plan and assess progress in achieving goals and completing actions identified in that plan, okay? Now, if you, if you haven't looked at the comprehensive plan in a while, there's a ton of objective, goals, objectives, and strategies. Most of those are not being accomplished by Larry Landon, most of those are being accomplished by, by the various committees and, and groups that make up the town governance, so volunteers, as the mayor talked about. But I ask you, if you could please, putting on your hat as a president of one of these committees, please dust that thing off, because what I'd like to do is engage with you over the next couple of weeks and identify where are you at on that task? How are we doing? We said we were going to do this back in 2017, how are we moving forward with doing that? The first thing I want to identify is what things haven't, is nobody working on, that's, that's important, and then we'll bring that list up to the town council to see, is it still an issue? And if so, who do we want to lead that effort? And then that helps us feed as we are continuing to work on the next comprehensive plan. So those are some of the, the current plan housekeeping items that I think fall under the Planning Commission's purview. So, and again, if you don't have a hard copy of the comprehensive plan, it is on our website, so please, and again, if you haven't looked at it recently as we come out of COVID, it's good to kind of have a pre-COVID perspective of our town as well. Any questions for me?
Any questions, council?
Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate it, appreciate you doing that with the committee. All right, Rails and Trails, I think he left some stuff here. Let's see, he's got some parks, he's got streetscapes, late July, the view, current DHHR, trail drawings for proper remediation, yeah, they're, they're working on things, stormwater management and that, so, council, you can look at it. Pete left us everything that he objectives and what he's been doing with the various different things, streetscapes, and also with the State Park Grant Project.
The big thing with that, Mayor, is that we did get the documentation from DOH, we did sign that and send the town's portion of the funding for Phase 5, so that is in the hands of DOH.
Good deal. Yeah, I signed them the other day, so, all right. You can review that, so let's move on down from streetscapes to the Train Development.
We had an owners' meeting on August 10th, which is, and you're all, or welcome to come, by the way, and a couple of the members of the present Historic Landmarks Commission came, and Town of Bath Planning Commission members come also, so we are looking for folks there, but what we were, what the owners' meeting is to do is to assess the project of the construction inside, assess where we're going to be in the next two weeks, these meetings are every two weeks, and if there are questions that have come up that haven't been answered, funding issues that may be coming up, or just to go over the money in general, you know, where, where are we with the grant, where are we with what else we, we need to do, so that's what the owners' meetings are about. They usually take an hour, hour and a half, so it's some, a little bit of a time commitment in it there every two weeks, so not tomorrow, but the next week, next Wednesday, we will have a meeting. We are expecting that the depot will be able to be open at Apple Butter. Now, it won't be, it may not be totally completed, but it will be able to have people to walk inside and like that, it will be a construction site, and that's, that's wonderful. What I'm doing in a, in a couple of the funding areas is, I'm, I'm talking with one of the local banks, C&amp;B, about setting up a link for donations and a QR code so that we can have a banner up there all the time so that people can make donations directly into the depot account, because no matter what money we have now to get through the project, there's going to be continual expenses, it's a building, and it needs, you know, they all need maintenance and they all need work and they all need upgrades and things like that. So, just so that we can see what we can develop as far as that goes. As far as funding also, what we have done in, in the past before COVID is we would have parking on the depot lots, so I wanted to bring that subject up to council about having parking again down there for the lot and the depot as a beneficiary of the money that comes from it, because, you know, we'll need, it's a waste to not do it, and it's a waste to not do it for the town, but also if the depot were able to have it open, we can set-
Is this for the Apple Butter Festival, Susan?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. Yeah, I'm talking about parking down there for the Apple Butter Festival, and we've done it before, Rick has been a chief opener and, you know, the enforcer and all this kind of stuff, but if, if the depot is, were able to have it open, then we can park cars and say, by the way, your $5 or whatever is going to this depot, you can go in if you like and you can donate more if you like, you know. And so I want to lay that, it's not on the agenda like to vote on or anything like that. If we want to join with another group, and I would suggest a town group, some, you know, because you know how charity begins at home, that we put together a booth of people and head for that again this year if we can, because it's pretty much, I mean, there's some construction stuff down there, but it's not full.
Not a lot.
Not, you know, as much as it was.
And it'll be cleaned up mostly by then, so they're, they're moving right along with things, so.
Yeah, so I wanted to just let you know what I'm doing, and the next owners' meeting will be, let's see, the 24th at 10:00 a.m. at the depot, you get to go through, finally pick interior colors, and that's what that was like.
Is that September or August?
That'll be August.
August, it's every two weeks.
Susan, you're, on the agenda it says 10:30.
It does.
It does.
Yep, 10:30. Your 10 o'clock?
Wait a minute. I, oh, wait, 10:30, well, I don't know why.
I blame myself.
Sharon?
I'm winging it.
You know, I know, I know, I know, so 10, it's, it's 10 a.m. in the meeting.
It's p.m., 10 p.m. Susan, great point.
So, it's, you know, it's, it's going to be a happening place, so.
Do you want to get something together to present that to the next council meeting, Susan?
Well, I certainly could, you mean, as far as the parking for, yeah, the other groups and-
Have we gotten any?
Not for the Train Depot, but for another location, yes.
For Liberty Street, from the voicemails.
Okay.
We're at a Train Depot meeting.
At the Train Depot.
At the Train Depot.
Yep, it's at the depot. All right. Thanks, Susan. Our Landmarks Commission, we've already discussed, so.
Let me tell you that the, the three members, the three members of the Landmark Commission had a meeting, they met, they, like I said, two of them came to the depot owners' meeting, sat through the whole thing, and then they met at 11:30 that day and just kind of talked about general items, general items of putting it back together, general goals, getting with SHPO in, in September, training with SHPO plans and like that. So they are a group, a working group, there are three now, Joyce Jones, Ryan Reban, yep, and Zachary Salman, and they're doing, they're doing well, they're going to wait to set their regular meetings until they get a schedule from, from Zach for, from his school and like that, and when they get a couple more members, they'll, they'll then talk about electing officers and that kind of thing, but they felt they should wait, so, anyway.
Good deal, good deal.
Odious group, I think that's all I have.
All right, well, we'll move down to Plarkton Recorder's reports. Madam Plark, do you have anything?
I'm requesting a budget revision, it is to bring the balance, current balance of the general fund as a starting balance for this fiscal year's budget, so I just need a resolution of- So I just need a resolution of.
We all need to sign.
Thank you. Well, just need to tell me yes or no, and I'll mark it.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, the resolution is for just what you said. The regular session today was held and the revision of the levy estimate of the Town of Bath. And you can see on your page, this has to do with the general.
So I'm bringing it up, right?
Yeah, the general funding like this. And it's more or less hand in hand with the budget revision we did at the last meeting. So it's not the now of the ordinary, so.
Well, I'm moved to ask if somebody wants to make a motion to.
So moved?
All right, I have a second.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, a second, to, for resolution 2022-08-03 for a budget revision, just kind of a housekeeping issue that needs to be done. So I will ask, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it's done. That's all. Okay, do you have anything?
No. The financing.
Okay, one of them will be in the finance then.
Yeah, no, I don't have any.
All right, let's move to finance.
Okay. And we just, we, of course, whoever, grants and like this. And Sharon always provides us with budget comparison, account balances and things like this. We talked about meeting times for that committee. Just, I talked with the group to just see, is this working for them? We've been doing it now for a year. And what it is, we meet on the third Monday of the month at 4:00 P.M. And on the first and second Tuesdays at 3:30 P.M. And that's so that our members can attend.
First and third.
First and third, yeah. That's so our members can attend other committee meetings if they want to and like that. Sometimes it makes kind of one day, but that's okay. And it seemed okay, Sharon, if you want to make any adjustments to the schedule that you have for us in the office. I'm not sure if that is what you have that you can tell people that they call in. But we talked about that and just our vacancy of our assistant clerk, which is quite a hit and like that. And we have the bills.
All right, let's pay some bills.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to pay the Town of Bath bills in the amount of $9,791.15.
Second. So a motion, a second on the floor to pay the Town of Bath's bills in the amount of $9,791.15. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I would like to make a motion to pay the Berkeley Springs Waterworks bill in the amount of $61,793.24.
Second. I have a motion, a second on the floor, Berkeley Springs Waterworks bills in the amount of $61,793.24. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I would like to make a motion to pay the cemetery bill in the amount of $3,685.
Second. A motion, a second on the floor to pay the cemetery bills in the amount of $3,685. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Beth, how long do we continue mowing? Where did you contract?
Labor Day, the Friday before Labor Day.
Is that going to be enough?
Two more weeks.
The way that the grass is still growing, I, wild.
Well, I understand that, but the town has been paying for the mowing of the cemetery most of the summer, so.
My question is, is that going to meet your needs or is it going to look like hell up through Halloween?
It's going to look terrible, but we've stopped, we've stopped that day. We've stopped the Friday before Labor Day for the last five or six years.
Maybe if you find a need, you know, we can come back and say, you know.
We'll see.
We'll see. Yeah.
We would also have to see that if the contract failed or like the letter of agreement ends Labor Day. So, I mean, I have no objection to continue mowing it, absolutely not. But the contract ends like that, so.
Any more discussion?
As we get a little bit further along.
Maybe the grass will die quickly in the next couple of weeks. All right, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I would like to make a motion to pay the rail trail bill in the amount of $144.
Second. I have a motion, a second on the floor to pay the rail trail bills for $144. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes.
And then this one, I'd like to make a motion to pay the tree board bill in the amount of $0.
What?
Yeah.
Is it really zero? I thought there was.
It's a surprise. It's zero. Can we grant that?
I'll second that for you.
I'll write that check.
Ah gee, okay. I'm getting.
I'm getting hot.
Open the windows.
I'm going to open one of those windows back there and maybe get some air in. Keep it up, Truville. Yeah, open that open back there. Maybe we'll get a little air circulation. We got to come up with a better.
Yeah, we don't have any.
I don't have any.
Nobody that can do that kind of work.
Maybe put central air in, mini-splint.
Yeah, you donate, I'll put in. Okay, tree board?
Tree board will be meeting tomorrow. So if there's anything, I need to bring it for the council and we'll let our next meetings.
Good, good. Grants?
All right. I just wanted to bring up a couple of things for any, for any committees or any council members. I had lunch with Region Nine and had some really good conversation with them. And they have a ton of projects going on, on some things that the town could have qualified for. So if you guys want to make me a list of a project or projects that you guys have in mind, something that's coming up, let me know, email them to me. Because on the 29th, I'm going to, I'm going to hand deliver this list to them, go to their meeting, and they're going to see how they can help us with our projects. There's a ton of funding that's coming in through them, even some ARPA money there's access to for additional projects. So I think we'll have some luck utilizing them just from the, you know, the very beneficial, you know, conversation we had during the lunch. So if you don't have my email and you have a project in mind, I'll give it to you after the meeting. But just shoot me over whatever you have in mind, anything.
Can you send an email out about that for me tomorrow?
Yeah, I can send it out to you guys. But for like, you know, Larry, Lisa, anything that you guys, if you guys have anything going on, you might need grant money for anything, let me know. And I'm just going to give it to them and, you know, see what they can come up with for us.
That's great.
So, but that's.
Without Bill and Matt Pennington, we've kind of lost touch a little bit with Lisa.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah, but, you know, it's, I'm going to go to all their meetings now. They got me the list, you know, so just let me know.
That's fine.
Get that in the loop. That's all I have.
Watch if you break it in.
Yes.
All right. Good deal. Thank you. Public safety.
Everybody's fervent with the chief.
Nothing really new moving forward with the candidates, polygraphs and stuff for tomorrow. We'll see if we can get anybody out and work on his psychological exam. So, so we kind of went different route because not everybody was able to meet this week, do interviews. So we're getting the other two phases out. See if we weed anybody out, then we'll have the final interviews probably within at least four weeks.
That's good. Once again, this polygraph and the psychological assessment is all new.
Yeah, yeah, this is new.
So the police reform stuff that's going on, that's the state's response to it. So it's a costly endeavor and it's very time consuming.
And also, I talked to the polygraph examiner. He said, need to do a little bit more research on it. But he asked if we were being reimbursed for people that leave. Said we really can't do that. He said there is a town in West Virginia that is Dewayne, that. So we might need to do some more research on that. They leave before a two-year period that they have to reimburse a certain percentage.
The academy fee you're talking?
Yeah.
Because I just read an article today, where the agency of Ohio, township in Ohio, is actually doing that in the whole state of Ohio does that. We might want to check in a little bit more.
We might want to check in, see if we can find anything out because last time I talked to our attorney, he said absolutely not.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I don't know, maybe something has changed. But I remember years ago, many years ago, one time the town had someone that we had sent to school graduate in somebody else's uniform, you know? So it's bad. It's a bad situation.
I'll find out more on that and what probably happened. Hopefully, they can bring it to me.
Good luck with that.
Thanks, chief. Comment or question? I don't know if this is for public safety or public works, but has everybody noticed we don't have crosswalks?
We call DOH.
Yeah, they're common. They're common. DOH?
Okay.
I'm just afraid someone's going to hit there. I know I was going to hit there the other day.
Yeah, yeah, DOH has got it on their schedule. I mean.
There's an email that came out last week.
Yeah, Pete sent us an email that actually all the crosswalks that we asked to be actually identified, they're going to go ahead and identify. It's the way it looks, is the way I was reading that the other day.
But once again, DOH moves at its own pace.
Right, no, it's one. Yep.
We may need to contact DOH and get it, for them to get a hold of the contractors that did the lines because they forgot the one turn lane down here.
Yep.
Seven eleven.
Yep, they got that messed up and that's all.
And there's no lines on the sides of the road, like the shoulder that starts the shoulder. There are no lines once you get past there either.
Well, whoever was painting the lines, it was really amusing that they painted over the dead.
Stunk.
Yeah, in the road. So he had a big old yellow line down.
Yeah, they had a line right across.
I'm like, you know, if there's five of you here, somebody couldn't have pushed them out of the wreck. It would have been perfect to put on the news.
Yeah, really.
It would have been like a cartoon.
Yeah. Yeah, the crosswalks are in the process. Like I said, Pete did send us information on that the other day, showing us which ones that they had identified to be the ones that they were going to do. Like I said, according to that list, it looked like the ones that we had asked for, they had done the traffic survey and said, yes, we did need them. So hopefully they'll do, except that where the flashing lights are, hopefully we'll get independents and Congress and, you know, all those streets down on there done too, so.
Follow on question, now we used to have one right across from St. Vincent, between St. Vincent and the State Park. Do we know if that one's up back on the schedule?
That was mentioned. I think that was.
I think it was on that list. I think it was on that list.
Thank you.
I'll look up that email and send it to you.
Yeah, I think it was. But when they're going to get it done, I couldn't tell you because it's the state of West Virginia. They do things when they feel like doing it.
But, you know, like Brana said, it's getting ready start.
I know.
Apple Butter.
And they've had, they've had five, six weeks.
We have offered years ago when this come up to paint the crosswalks and we were not allowed to through the state. We could not do it. They did say though that now that the road has been paved and the ADA curbs are done, they can go ahead and do it. So hopefully they will move forward and get it done.
So I don't know if you guys have been through Hancock, but some of those crosswalks, they got light up as well. Was that anything we could look into?
Well, they actually, they actually got rid of those. That one that lit up there by Weavers?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was actually a contract out by one of the state road guys to pull them up out of the ground and they eventually did. So if you go by there, the meter that they had there, it's capped off. There's no meter sitting there and they took them completely out there going. So, I mean, they did work for a while, but they are expensive.
All right, well, they are expensive. Give them a crosswalks curse a little more.
They got a grant back in the late nineties.
So who's responsible for the sign that says you have to stop for the people in the crosswalk? Is that the town or is that DOH?
It's a U.S. highway. They won't let us do anything.
Yeah, because like I was just telling him, sometimes those cars do not. You've got to almost like walk out.
Oh, they absolutely do not.
Yeah.
Because they're in the crosswalk or not.
We tried to get the state to let us do some things and they said absolutely not. State road, and you can't touch it. If you touch it, you're in violation and we will find you. That's exactly what they told this council. So, you know, it's a real problem because you call up to Charleston, up to the signal and light department and all them places and it's like, no, we'll get it done. It's under contract. But when are you going to do it? We don't have a date.
That's why the crosswalks will eventually get done. When?
We don't know, unfortunately.
Hopefully, it's for your season.
You got to squish a couple more animals.
Maybe we'll come down and take care of it after that.
It wouldn't have mattered.
Okay, we're going to move on. Let's see, cemetery.
So does the council want me to ask the contractor if they would be available to continue mowing if funding were available?
I think the question could be put one back.
All right.
I would not commit yet.
Right, okay. Very good.
Like the 15th might give you some breathing room. How bad was it in the spring? If you quit Labor Day last year, how bad was it to start it up in the spring? Any different? I mean, did they say it was hell?
I think that the contractor actually went up a couple of weeks early and did some work on his own without being paid because it wasn't mess, yes.
I mean, if you go into the.
If we are actually going to mow until the grass stops growing, we would know, we would need to mow until November.
Right, yeah, I get that.
Yeah.
But.
Just ask them.
I will, I will definitely ask. And they have done an outstanding job this summer as they have the last couple of years. So the cemeteries look very good. They've gotten compliments every week from people that are visiting loved ones. So they've done a good job and I'm sure it's going to be really disappointing for people when they go up there after Labor Day.
Maybe they could change the mowing to every two weeks instead of every week. They can't keep up with that.
Yeah, you would never, in two weeks, it would be too high to try to get through.
Right.
So, yeah, just ask them and see and then we'll cross that bridge when the time comes, we'll see what we can do.
Very good. I did, I did want to ask the council, unless anyone has any objections, cemetery is going to incorporate its workman's comp into the town's workman's comp policy because that will save the cemetery a lot of money and it really will cost the town pennies, you know?
Why was that ever separate? I mean, the cemetery's been under the town.
I think because in the past, before we hired independent contractors, we had a lot of employees that were working in the cemetery, town employees.
Then it makes sense.
So, but now that we're using contractors, it's probably not, it's not necessary. It will actually save us money. So anybody, it costs money to, for them even to maintain a contract for us. So unless anybody has some problems, I'll just ask Sharon to go ahead and do that. So, okay.
No problem there.
Thomas and Senator.
And I guess that's all I have for now.
Okay, all right. All right, public works, still have a full crew.
One thing I was going to say is Ask Plumb went around on behalf of the electric company and did us a big favor yesterday and last Friday. They went around and they trimmed all the trees that are viewed remotely near any of the electric lines. So a lot of stuff that ours goes, go through in the back of a truck, trying to trim branches that are hanging down their roads. they did ninety-five percent of it on most of the town roads.
Good deal.
So we were lucky.
They used to knock it out quick, too.
They had probably five or six trucks, I was out riding the bikes around, I had to turn around a million times, 'cause all the little roads, there they were. Not at all.
That's it.
That's it.
All right, good. Good deal, good deal.
I have a question about trash.
Go ahead.
Okay, you were here the last time I was here. For ages, I begged to have a trash receptacle in front of portals on that block from the theater to Mount Laurel. Gets a lot of traffic, so we finally got one. They put it there, it got painted, the town called Lori and asked Lori to paint it, even though she still wasn't with the chamber, she did it anyway. And then, uh, maybe a week or so later, somebody decided they didn't like what she had painted on there and spray painted it, which is not a big, I mean, it could have been spray painted again, but the problem was, the hole to put the trash in was facing the street. It should be facing the sidewalk, this is a convenience, as far as I'm...
That's already been taken care of. They already took care of that.
But where is it? It's gone.
We took it because it was being...
Don't know about that one.
Yeah.
But we decided at the last meeting...
Clean it up.
You weren't here.
I know.
Um, I just went walking through town and said, this way, everybody gets a little bit of what they wanted. So if you're going, if, let's say, you're going south on Washington Street, those garbage cans, the, the openings will face going south, okay? So when the trucks come down, it'll be on this side the whole way, people don't gotta go out in the road to put stuff in. And coming the other way, if you're going north, then the only stuff to be on the south side. And they're all turned, if you go check, they're all turned, so nobody's going out in the road to put garbage in.
But where is our trash can?
The one that you have, he, he took up there because it got spray painted again, and they were supposed to be getting it cleaned up.
Well, it's been probably close to two months.
It's been three weeks. I know, right before I went to vacation.
That's when, yes, but they spray painted it before.
Right, right.
And, but it was always facing the street.
Well, that was, there was purpose for that, because, you know, the way we had them built, we didn't put two slots in it, because people... How do I wanna say this? They wanna jam trash in both sides of it, then when the guys go to get the doors open, trash falls out, you got stuff flopping all on, on the sidewalk and everywhere else. I mean, we had, we had the problem right down here on, on Fairfax Street, where they would stuff both sides of it with trash bags. And then to get the trash bags out, you had to tear the trash bags open to get them out. So, um, I will have that trash can brought back down as soon as they get that, you know, that, that spray, I, I thought they were gonna remove the spray paint, but, um, I'll bring it back down, and it's probably still got the spray paint on it.
I'll call Robbie tonight when we get home.
Yeah, have him do that.
Yeah, it's only one side, so it shouldn't take but five minutes to spray it with another car.
Yeah, I don't, I, like I said, you know, so yeah, call him and have him bring that back down and put it the way that you suggested, so that it's not out the roadway.
Yep.
Based on the amount of trash that's in those cans, like this past Saturday, if we're full, we could use more.
Yeah, and we actually have put out more, we've got more trash cans out than we've ever had out.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know...
But don't think it's some of those trash cans through town and by the park, people come with their pickup trucks and their garbage from home.
They'll, they'll bring it and stuff it in there, I mean, just like the other day, they went and picked the trash up down here on Fairfax and Wilkes Street, and within fifteen minutes after they picked the trash up, there was two trash bags on top of it, full to the top that you could hardly lift. I don't even know how they got them up on top of that damn trash can.
He's hanging free your garbage.
They put them both up on top of the, the trash can. They didn't put it beside it, they put it up on the trash can, so when our guys come along, they had to lift it off, and, you know, then what, what happens? The bag tears, it falls to the ground, and they gotta sit there and clean it up, you know, so, I mean, if you see somebody bringing out-of-town trash into town, please notify us, because it, it's getting to be a problem now, and that's where it's coming from, you know? People have decided that they don't wanna pay trash service, so they bring, at three, four o'clock in the morning probably, they drop off one or two bags of trash at two or three different trash cans. These two down, the, the one down here on Wilkes and Fairfax is continuously, within four or five hours of being dumped, it's totally overflowing again. And that's happening during the daytime. So, I mean, it's become a real problem now, and, you know...
Well, it's illegal, it's illegal dumping.
Right, true, and, but people, you gotta catch them.
Let, let me share this one with you, what happened with, with our, our crew this, was it Monday or Tuesday? I don't even remember. But anyway, this is how crazy it gets. Somebody, who knows who, they obviously at some point in time took, there was a garbage bag out on one of the sidewalks. Some brilliant person thought that, I would, my mind would never have gone here. They took a full garbage bag, untied where it was tied, turned it upside down, where it was on the sidewalks, then they took the bottom of the garbage bag, which was covering all the garbage, and tied it like it was a knot. So, of course, when our guys went to pick it up on Monday morning,
Everything came out.
All over the sidewalk. Our guys just picked it up and cleaned it up.
Where were you man?
And it was just like, and I said, you know, really, it's pretty ingenious, like, it's like Halloween, but my mind would never have gone there. Somebody was like, oh, this would be a great idea. So that's kinda cracked, we didn't want that.
Yeah, unfortunately.
They're considered neighbors, isn't it?
Yeah, well, and unfortunately, our, our, our town, our town trash guys have gotten a bad rap in the last six, eight weeks, and they work hard. They're out here in the morning when it, it, you know, before it gets real hot, they're out here mowing in the afternoon, it might be a hundred degrees out, but they're still out working. And I, I, I'm telling you, I was pretty upset, some of the comments that was made about how supposing our trash guys are lazy. Those guys work hard, and I'm telling you, I've been on the trash truck, and I'm telling you, four hours of loading trash is not fun, I'm telling you. And it's got to stop. People are being very vicious about the trash to, to our trash guys, and there is no reason for it. There's absolutely no reason for it. These guys work hard, they come to work every day, they're here every day, they come in, one of them comes in every weekend on Saturday afternoons, cleans the trash can out and, and dumps them so that they're ready for Sunday. I mean, that's dedication. They come in and, I mean, they're getting paid for it, but it's dedication, they come in, every week they do a rotation. And, and for somebody to put a bag of trash and tear the bottom out of it and make it look like is ridiculous. And they stick trash bags on top of the trash cans and expect our guys to lift them off of there without tearing them and getting trash all over the place. I, I would implore anybody that is at the least bit worried about how hard these guys work, volunteer one day, go out on that trash truck. Go out and throw trash for four hours, and see how you feel when you walk away, because it's a nasty, nasty job.
So couldn't you see what trash was in there to see where it came from?
It was all just, what was it, refugees, all just...
According to where this was, they put out their garbage like they always do when it was fine, so somebody obviously in the middle of the night just walked by and thought this was a great idea.
Probably wasn't the owner of the trash.
And I was born yesterday, too.
But, but it's enough, I mean, people have to realize, these guys work hard.
They do.
They, they work hard, and, and, you know, I don't wanna go out on a trash truck, but a couple of times that I had to last year during COVID, it was nasty. The stuff people puts in bags, and, and, and they don't tie it up, and they fill them up so you can't pick them up, and you gotta hold, you hold on to the bottom of them, try to get them up into the trash truck, it's ridiculous.
They don't use a bag at all.
Yes, you know, these people in this town need to wake up. They need, this is a service that is provided to them, and our guys do a hard job, a very hard job. I mean, we had Dean in here for twenty-some years, that man was in here every day lifting trash, and, and it's unbelievable, the backlash that these poor guys have to put up with. And, and I think it's time the town realizes that these guys, you know, aren't at everybody's whim, you know? Like I said, I, I wasn't gonna do this tonight, but I, I've had enough with them. I've had enough of being told that these guys are lazy, they don't wanna do their jobs, you know? Yeah, believe me, I've been out with them, I know what it's like, and I can say that.
For a G man.
You know, so, enough about that subject, we'll, we'll get the trash can back down there, and, you know, we'll take care of that. They're turned around so that nobody's putting trash from the, uh, the side of the street, it's, they're, they're gonna be on the sidewalk, they can put the trash in like this on the sidewalk, or that side in this, and they're not on the street, so... All right.
All right.
Ordinances. We have, it's in here.
Yeah, I've got it here.
Yeah.
Is this something you'll...
We can do it.
We can do this, we can do this?
We can do that. It's a second reading.
Okay.
Um, this is gonna be our second reading, uh, of twenty-twenty-two oh-eight dash oh-two. It's amending in part, chapter forty-two, Historical Preservation, Article Two, Historical Landmark Commission. This is basically where we are moving from nine members back down to what the state says, the five members that we have on the landmark commission. That's basically set in the West Virginia Code dash eight dash twenty-six A dash four.
Really, that's all it is?
And, uh, that's all it is, it's bringing it back down to the composed five members that are supposed to be on the landmark commission. I will entertain a...
So moved.
Okay, then, I have a motion and a second on the floor to pass the twenty-twenty-two dash oh-eight oh-two, amending in part, chapter two, forty-two, Historical Preservation, Article Two, its Historical Landmark Commission. Any discussion?
What I was talking about earlier.
Okay, yeah, and I was thinking here about being residents of the Town of Bath, outside of the five. If you can't do it, many members may be property owners of Bath, but don't reside in Morgan County.
Right.
Okay, so it's got both of those things.
Yep. All right, any discussion or any more discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it is back to where it should be, according to the way the state says it has to be.
Now we pop some champagne.
Anyway.
Do you know what that is, any bottles?
All right. Chris isn't here, uh, waterworks, um, I didn't, I had talked to Ron, but really not too much going on. Everybody knows, they started the waterline replacement, uh, in the Berryville area out south of town. Um, uh, so they're working on that, so if you see guys, um, working on waterlines, it's probably our guys putting in the new waterlines in Berryville. I think we're gonna be up around Greenway Cemetery at some point.
Mary Woods or Mary Benwood?
Yeah, Mary Woods up in there. So, Mary Woods, so, um, they have started, uh, they've got their stuff out just south of, um, the, um, Mystical Pizza out there. Uh, they're just south of there, that's where they're working out of. Um, so as far as I know, it started last week and everything's going okay, so... So, anyway, that is underway after two and a half, almost three years of trying to get it done, but, um, you know, the Corona set us back a year on that, so... Um, all right, anyway, this is the point where I come to ask if anybody needs to bring any, anything forward to this council. Um, if not, I'm so moved, I'm entertaining a move to, uh, common consent to, uh, close the meeting.
Done. Done.
And so, yesterday.